All right, and good evening and welcome to the December ninth meeting of the Stowe Select Board. We will start the meeting with public comment. And public comment, just as a reminder, is for anything that is not on the agenda. And I will take any public comment now. Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to board member updates. Any board member updates?
Had a wonderful time at the tree lighting at the event at the Lower Common that we went to. It was very cold. But I wanted to say a big thank you to the Stowe Lions Club for pulling it together again this year. Hopefully they'll be doing it again next year. It was, uh, kids seemed to have fun. Few people were afraid of the Grinch, but we got past that.
Yes, and the thank you to the Scouts for volunteering. They did a great job as well.
Into the Shaws and Duncan and Honey Pot for their donations.
Yeah, for all the donations. Yeah. No, that's it.
Uh, the Stowe Gobbler was fantastic.
Oh, yes, awesome.
And it seems like always looking around, there's always a bunch of new faces. So I'm assuming either it's, you know, people coming back home for the holiday or people from out of town coming back. And so it's, it's really cool to see people see Stowe and enjoy it.
Yep, it was a lot of fun. Alrighty, Administrator's report.
Just a few things for this evening. Reminder that tomorrow night is the conversation with the Stowe Police for Belonging and Equity in Stowe. It is at Pompo at six thirty. And then the Fire Department Santa Ride is this Sunday. The full schedule can be found on our website or on social media. And then I wanted to do a little show and tell. So today, Arnie Epstein and I attended a ceremony at the State House where Stowe was recognized as a leading by example community. They had this beautiful poster made up. It was for our efforts in sustainability. And we got this beautiful little award. So it was very nice. They only recognized six entities, two state agencies, two individuals, and two municipalities.
Amazing.
And we were actually the only municipality because the other one was the Wakefield Light Department. So it was really nice. They were very appreciative of all the work we've done with sustainability. It was nice. It was a nice ceremony. It was a nice event. So I wanted to show you all that. And that is it.
Thank you. That's fantastic. Congratulations.
Arnie's done an amazing job.
He really has.
He really has. Yep, yep, absolutely. All right, we've got a couple of appointments tonight. The first is the Randall Library Board of Trustees who will be making a joint appointment to fill a vacancy. And so do we have?
Well, Richard's here. You have a couple trustees on. I don't see Morgan though.
Okay.
David's sitting with Dee here.
David's online.
Okay.
And Ayesha is your candidate, so.
Okay.
I saw Maureen's there.
Maureen's online, yep.
Okay.
But I don't believe you have a posted meeting, so I don't know if, if one of you wants to just make the recommendation that the board took or how you'd like to proceed.
Sure, would you like to?
Yeah, I'd like to.
Yeah.
We unanimously agreed that we would like to appoint Ayesha as the new trustee.
Okay, fantastic.
So the information I got today was kind of ambiguous. It said some, it, it said something like if there were, if we, we had a quorum, we would meet or vote as a, as a committee.
Okay.
But we don't, so.
It's okay. Um, we just need a recommendation from you guys. So it can go one of two ways. One, you can give me the recommendation and then.
You can only to recommend.
Great, perfect. Then, um, that's all we need from you guys and then we can just take a vote. But Ayesha, would you love to just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, I'm happy to. Hi, everyone. My name's Ayesha Anderson. Sorry, can't be there with you person today, but glad to take up some of your time on Zoom. I was very excited to meet with trustees last week to talk about how much I care for our Randall Library. I've been volunteering as part of the Building Committee 2.0 since its inception. I have been a library lover for my entire life and so very excited to bring our new library to fruition. Now that the work of the Building Committee is wrapping up because we have a new building, I'm very interested in continuing to support the library and our community by playing a bigger role in the management and oversight of the library going forward as we go through a lot of changes. Our new building, a new library director, so many new resources for the community. So that's why I'm here and I hope to fill the rest of this term until elections come up in the spring.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much. Board members, do you have anything that you would like to say or add or anything?
Thank you, Ayesha, for being willing to.
Just a point of clarification. Is this an appointment or a recommendation for appointment?
This is an appoint, we're, we, we can appoint as the appointing board. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, then I will take a motion.
I move that in a joint vote with the trustees of the Randall Library in accordance with.
Hold on a minute. Yep.
I would just change that to based on the recommendation.
Based on the recommendation. So I would say move that based on a recommendation. Sorry. I, I got you down. Sorry.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I, I'm gonna, um. You want me just a second?
Somebody found something in the bylaws. It said we're both groups are supposed to vote.
But you don't have a posted meeting.
So the vote the other day doesn't count as vote.
No.
Because you said you didn't have.
Okay, then.
It's a joint vote at this moment and you don't, so that's why the board can take your recommendation.
Okay.
You don't need to say this, right?
I understand.
No, you don't have to say that at all. Yep, yep, great.
So Morgan is now on and has her literal hand raised if you'd like to.
Oh. Okay, great.
So Morgan, we were just going through, um, and, and we were just going to move through the appointment. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just wanted to say that because we were not able to post in time, there's just miscommunication about what was supposed to happen. The board, the trustees that are here just want to offer a recommendation for Ayesha. We think she's a great fit and we're really excited for her to join us to finish out the open term. And if you have any questions for any of us, of course, please let us know, but we appreciate your support in getting her, getting her on set.
Great, thank you. Um, okay, send down. Do you wanna do a motion? Great.
Uh, I move that based on the support and recommendation of the trustees of the Randall Library in accordance with MGLC forty, four one S eleven, Ayesha Anderson be appointed to fill the vacancy on the Randall Library Board of Trustees effective from now October ninth, sorry, December ninth until May two thousand twenty six at the annual town election.
Second. All right, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous.
Got distracted by the umbrella.
Unanimous. All right, fantastic. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ayesha.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ayesha.
Thanks, Morgan.
All right, next up, we have another appointment of a new treasurer collector. So Denise, would you like to introduce?
Certainly. So my recommendation for this evening is for Lonnie. Lonnie's been with us for six years now. Brad, our current treasurer collector, is retiring at the end of this month. Lonnie has been the assistant treasurer collector since her time here and has been really learning the role and getting ready for this. The expectation all along is, I mean, that's why you have assistant treasurer collectors, to move up to this position. She is extremely hardworking, extremely dedicated, and I am so thrilled that she is here and ready to take this spot. So I think she's great and I think it'll be a great department with her at the helm.
Fantastic. Do you want to say anything? Right on the spot?
Right, um, thank you sincerely. It's a pleasure working for the town of Stowe. I don't live here, but I enjoy coming here every day. You really have such a great group of people and I'm looking forward to being on a little bit different level with everybody. I'm excited about that and I really appreciate this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? No comments? Thank you. All right, then I will take a motion.
I move to appoint Lonnie Creashia to the position of treasurer collector for the town of Stowe effective January first, twenty twenty six through Ja- June thirtieth, twenty twenty six and subject to annual reappointment thereafter.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye, and that is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay warm.
Yes.
She is sleeveless twelve months out of the year.
Thank you all. Take care. Have a good night.
Good night, Lonnie.
Good night.
I think that's great. I, I dealt with her. I didn't know who she was, but I had to, I got some erroneous rear tax in my car. And she was wonderful to deal with.
That's awesome.
Good move.
Thank you.
As a vote of confidence.
Yes, absolutely.
See you tomorrow in coffee in this room.
I'll verify it tomorrow. Thanks. Okay, and so next on the agenda, we have the menorah lighting, which has now become an annual tradition in Stowe. Proposed for December twenty first, the Lower Common. I believe we have Leonard Goldar here this evening. We have Rabbi Polter here this evening. And do you want to tell us briefly about what we are expecting?
Um, actually, you know, we've done this for two years now.
Yeah, yeah.
This is really going to be pretty much the same
Okay.
festival and same activities as the past two years.
Great.
The only added or change actually is the town purchased a menorah. Thank you.
Yes.
And that, you know, that's, so that's a nice added thing. Before we were, you know, Rabbi Polter was bringing his menorah. And, you know, Rabbi Polter had a chance to look at it and, you know, it seems to be very nice, very nice.
The only thing it doesn't have, which mine had, is it doesn't have separate switches. But I mean, that's not a big deal because it's about six foot menorah. It's fine. I mean, if we can just loosen the bulb slightly and then.
So it's automatic. When you turn the first switch on, each one turns on twenty-four hours exactly after that.
Really?
Yes.
Is that?
Yes, so.
So you have to turn it on like Sunday afternoon or whatever.
So when you turn it on Sunday, they'll turn on every day thereafter.
Wow, that is awesome.
That is.
That's cool.
That's awesome.
Okay, well then.
And he's just good at getting them.
So I have to go every night. That's nice to be. Everything is very, you know.
Yeah.
I saw they put it on a flat, they put it on a wider piece of wood, I guess, because it'll lighten it.
Yes, so they think mounted.
Whatever, yes, right.
Yeah, yeah. That's excellent.
That's really cool.
Cool, and it looks like the only thing that we have pending from you is a temporary food, like a, a Board of Health permit that's been put in?
Yeah, I think they sent it, I think they sent it to me.
Yep.
I mean, they said it's, they said from the fourteenth to the twenty-first.
I think so, oh, I don't know. I don't know. It's, is it a day thing or is it a?
I don't know how the Board of Health, I don't know how they handle it. It's just a temporary permit through the Board of Health, so.
Okay. Okay. I mean, it may be for the full week, but.
They're permitting it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't need it for the week. I just.
No, 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 I know, yeah.
I think they may have said it expires on the twenty-first. Our event is on the twenty-first, but maybe it means it expires at the, in the nighttime after we're done.
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
So I don't know if they sent me a pa, I mean, I, I, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, I can send it to someone if they did send us an actual.
Just send it to Denise.
We're, yeah.
Yeah, you can just send it to my office, Joyce, or we can follow up with the Board of Health.
What's, okay, uh, yeah, I don't know where it came from. Did it come from here or came from?
It probably came from Neshoba, Neshoba Associated Board of Health.
Yeah, Neshoba, right, right.
Yeah. That's the only, we're just, again, trying to check all the boxes, dot all the i's and cross all the t's and just make sure. But, um, but no, it was great. I, I look forward to being there again. And I, I, I had a lovely time when I, when we went the, um, the last couple of years, so.
Hopefully it was a little warmer than last year. I think last year was pretty cold.
It was very cold.
I, I, you know, a number of people from the town were there and that was great.
Yeah.
And hopefully the same, you know, because it's open to the public. Everybody is welcome and encouraged to attend.
Yeah, what sort of happened?
What?
The town, it's so, it's gonna be on, um, December, December twenty first in Lower Village.
Where is it now? Oh, yeah. No, where?
The Lower Village.
In Lower Village. Next to, next to the Christmas tree is now, we now also have a menorah that goes on in the flag.
Same as the Christmas.
Next to the menorah. So you mean near, near the Shaws and Oberschau? That, oh, very great, great.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks.
Um, so yeah, that's great. Um, did you, anybody on the board have any questions?
No.
We also put a spotlight on it during the.
Yes, you did during the tree lighting, yep.
Tree lighting so that we didn't light the menorah, we just put a light on the menorah.
Put a light on the menorah, yes.
And did a little bit of a countdown, so people were expecting it.
Yes.
I mean, there'll be potato pancakes which your store bought, so they're not, you know, prepared from scratch.
They're so good.
But the cookies aren't prepared from scratch, but Rabbi Polter and his wife have food certificates from the town of Acton, which is, you know.
Perfect.
We might have some, we might have some doughnuts, uh, which are also singly packaged from the factory or whatever, so.
Anything liquid?
That's if anything is left. By the time you come to the last night, we have a few events.
Right.
Do they have anything to drink?
Yeah, yeah, whatever. Just soft drinks, whatever.
Yeah, no wine.
No wine.
Lenny, that's a liquor perm.
I, I know.
Um, okay, then I, uh.
What, uh, did you say what time?
Was it six? I don't remember what we said.
Whichever time, you know, works best. I, I, we would.
Six P M.
What did you put on your tag? It was five to six. We have five to six.
I'm sorry.
Oh, five to, five to six. Five to six on the permit would be best.
Yep.
It's from, from five to six.
Yes.
Is that enough time?
On a Sunday. Yeah, yeah, of course.
Yes.
Yes, Sunday the twenty-first.
And the reason they probably put fourteen to twenty-one is because that's.
The whole duration of, huh, yeah.
Yeah, celebration, okay.
Makes sense to me.
All right, then I will, can I do both of these together, you think?
Yep, that's a, that's an answer. We did it that way.
Okay, okay, then I will take that whole thing together.
Should I look for it and send it to you or you'll just get it from the Shoba directly?
I mean, if you have it to send, that's fine.
Okay, who will send it to you?
Uh, so Town Administrator is all one word. At stow-ma.gov.
Town Administrator at Stowe?
Dash ma.gov.
Dash ma.gov.
It's also on the website.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, easily bound. Ready?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Uh, I move to approve a special event permit for the lighting of a menorah at the Stowe Lower Common on Sunday, December twenty first, twenty twenty five as requested by Rabbi Yosef Polter and Leonard Goldar. And I move to affir, sorry, I move to approve an entertainment license for the lighting of a menorah at Stowe Lower Common on Sunday, December twenty first as requested by Rabbi Polter and Leonard Goldar.
Second. Any further discussion? Nope. Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye, and that's unanimous. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Town Administrator at, I found it, at.
Stowe.
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 The dash ma.
Dash m a dot.
Put it on the.
Dot gov.
Dot gov.
Gov.
Yes, thank you.
Town Administrator at, I forgot the at. At stow-dash-mass.
I don't know. Ma.
At stow-dash-ma.gov.
Yep.
Dot gov, yep.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think it's on pictures. So we should get it in a minute.
Alrighty, then I.
So Madam Chair, the next item is going to be tabled. Abby Morgan withdrew her request for, um, this day of service.
Okay.
So.
Rescheduled or just withdrawn?
You should have.
As far as we know, withdrawn was the word we got this morning.
Okay.
All right.
All right, and thank you all.
And you should have it, I think, in your.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so that is that. So American Heritage Museum.
We're gonna have to read it. I move to table.
I, I put it in there in case you wanted to. You don't need to, but I put it in there if you wanted to just take a motion to close the item.
Oh, fine. Then should, do you want to just, oh, I see what you did. Sorry. Can you just read that motion?
Just because it was on the agenda.
Yeah. All right, as it is on the agenda, I move to table consideration of a special event permit for the MLK Junior Day of Service at Pom Pom Citiates Community Center on Monday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty six sponsored by the Neshoba Area Social Justice Alliance. Event manager, Abby Morgan.
All those in favor to table?
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous. Okay, thank you. All right, so moving through.
American Heritage.
American Heritage. I see Hunter is on. Hello, Hunter.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And congratulations again on the award.
Thank you. Yeah.
Right there. That's nice.
So talk to us. We, it sounds like.
So this is fairly.
You added a January event.
Yep, so it's fairly standard, other than they added a January event, which is why I'm putting it before you now so that they're all set for twenty twenty six, including their first event of the year.
Okay. And do you want to tell us a little bit about the new January one?
Yeah, so we had done this last year as, uh, it's like a living history weekend where we're honoring the Battle of the Bulge. So we have camp set out in the woods and basically it's a, this neat immersive experience where people get on a half-crack and they go out into the woods. And as they go out into the woods, you have a docent that talks about the Battle of the Bulge. And then they unload into the woods and people basically go around and interact with the reenactors that are encamped in the camps. And it, basically that happens through the course of the day. And it was really well received last year, so we decided to do it again this year with the addition of, the guys would like to do just a short sporadic gunfire midday as part of the, the event weekend. Something not even as, as, um, long as like the Pacific Battle that we have later in the year. It'd be something a little more shortened.
Okay.
And, and not as, as much. But it's, you know, it's one of those things where everyone goes out into the cold and, uh, you know, act, reenacts, you know, go, or interacts with the reenactors.
Okay. That sounds good to me. Um, does anyone have any questions? No.
It's gonna be cold out there.
No, it is gonna be cold.
Yeah, I think that's what they're going for. If that's the move, then that's next to it, you know?
All right, and do you have any questions?
Nope.
All right, then I will take a motion.
I move to approve the two thousand twenty-six schedule of events at the American Heritage Museum as presented at this meeting.
Second. And any further questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hunter.
Bye.
What's new later?
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
You too. Take care.
Okay, yep, because these are all the same ones that they've been, yep, okay. We have an acceptance of the Lake Boone Dam access maintenance and repair easement. Denise, would you want to speak to that?
Sure. Um, so this is part of the Lake Boone Dam replacement project. If you recall, at town meeting this spring, uh, town meeting authorized the board to acquire an easement. It's a small piece of property that is on the back of the dam, but will allow us to access the repairs. So the agreement has been negotiated with the help of council and Bruce Fletcher and Mr. and Mrs. Collins. And they have now signed it. It's coming to you to accept it. Once you sign that, we will remit payment for the eighty-six hundred dollars that, uh, the value of the easement is worth. And then we will continue to wait for the permitting so we can get the project going.
Can I ask a silly question?
Sure.
When an easement is bought, is, is that easement now part of the town's property?
It's a permanent easement. So it's not our property, but we have a permanent easement.
I just, that's my mind. A permanent easement, not a, not a, okay, got you.
Oh, it's a permanent easement.
Okay. All right, that was my only question. Any questions from anybody else?
Nope, that was gonna be my question.
Oh, um, great, and then I will take a motion.
I move to accept the Lake Boone Dam access maintenance and repair easement from Bob and Caroline Collins as presented at this meeting.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. All right, we have our town planner here.
I've just never heard of this.
Can you tell us all about this, please?
Start from the very beginning.
Definitely, absolutely, very beginning.
And give us a PowerPoint.
And walk us through it. But in all seriousness, this evening, you are here to ask us a question.
Yes, and lucky for you, I have no presentation.
Fantastic.
So I'm just here to respectfully request the adoption of the comprehensive plan on behalf of the planning board and the comprehensive plan committee. So the plan, as you know, represents over two years of community engagement, data gathering, workshops, and input from residents, staff, and other local stakeholders. So at this point, the plan represents a clear roadmap for achieving our shared vision. And it looks at responsible growth, transportation, economic development, natural resource protection, and community engagement. The plan includes a detailed strategy list that has specific items that we need to hold ourselves accountable to as a town. It includes a prioritized timeline, specific actions, responsible parties. And we're currently working on turning this into a more visually understandable action plan. So rather than having it in a very long spreadsheet, something that we can actually give to each board and committee so that they understand what their, uh, what the residents are asking each entity to, to achieve.
Awesome. Does anyone have any questions?
That was an extremely succinct, succinct, and to the point, it was a wonderful presentation.
It was so concise, like you have like.
Is there also the committee going into place that's gonna be following up on the plan to make sure things are being addressed that in a timely manner?
Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, so there is the, I, that the hope of creating this implementation committee in the next year that would somewhat reflect the comprehensive plan committee and really make sure that departments and boards are, again, held accountable to the, the priorities within the plan and using baseline metrics and tracking change over time and providing an annual report to residents, really showing what we're, what we're doing. So that is a hope that we would create that committee shortly.
Excellent. All right. Anything you'd like to add?
Any, yes. No, I just had a question. So does this formally dissolve the comprehensive plan committee?
Yes.
Was the charge until a plan was adopted?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, thank you for all of your work, comprehensive plan members.
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for dissolving.
No more meetings.
Is, is the intention to have the implementation committee be people who don't necessarily have association with other committees? Or like pull like sort of liaisons from each? Or is that not being considered yet?
I think it's not entirely clear exactly who would be on, if it needs to be a sitting board member or a liaison or if we would want residents on it. So a lot of that is to be discussed, yeah.
TV. Okay, okay.
Right. Yep, good. Uh, I will take a motion then.
I move to adopt the comprehensive plan as presented at the, by the planning director at this meeting.
Second. Any further discussion? Nope, seeing, oop, excuse me. Seeing and hearing none. Um, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work. Thank you for all, thank you for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
You too.
Good value.
All right, and next is, uh, we need to, okay, so. Yeah, we just need to decide whether or not we're going to have a discussion about renewing your contract. Did I say that?
So the language in my contract requires in writing the board to state whether or not you plan to renew my contract by December thirty first or not renew my contract by December thirty first. I have told Megan, to me, the minutes would count if you took a vote, but I didn't want to assume. So your options are either to say that you plan to renew my contract and that that would meet the status, that would satisfy the terms of the contract, or if you wanted to have an executive session to discuss, you would take that vote and have that meeting before the end of the month. And so either way, um, I just wanted to make sure we were following the terms of the contract.
I would be happy to move the first motion unless you all, unless anyone wants to meet before December thirty first.
Oh, we recently just had a review, which was unanimously positive.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't see a reason, in my opinion, to move into executive session.
Okay. We will have to in January have an executive session to discuss the actual terms of the actual new contract.
That was gonna be my question.
Yeah, but this is just a, because her contract says that, basically says that we have to talk about it, like, before.
Well, it says you have to give me six months if you don't plan to renew it. So that's, so if you don't intend to renew it, you have to tell me by December thirty. Well, it says you have to give me six months if you don't plan to renew it, so that's, so if you don't intend to renew it, you have to tell me by December thirty first.
That makes sense, yeah.
So by saying you plan to renew it, it meets the same criteria.
And I think as Engleborg, uh, clear, like, very smartly said, we did just have a review process and there are no, were no air issues there, so, um, I think I will take the first motion then.
Uh, could I ask a question?
Unless you have a question.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, if we go with option two, though, could that executive session sometime between now and December thirty first kill two birds, one stone and take the place of that January one?
Uh, in theory, absolutely. Um, however, do, I mean, do you think you would be ready before the end of the year to just ask?
I, I mean, it's up to me. I mean, I know we have the holidays, so it's just a matter of if it can be scheduled, so.
Yeah.
Uh, if you wanted to do that, I'm sure we could find time.
Would it take place within the schedule circulating or outside?
No.
Read the room.
No, it has to, it has to be, it has to be, it has to be an executive session.
No, but we've done it on a separate night, just to.
We've done it on a separate night.
Not confuse things.
You have to read the room.
I, I think, uh, I would, I would.
That's, that's fine, I'm just asking, just asking a question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I think I'd prefer to do it in January.
That's fine.
Um, that gives, that gives us time to review the old contract as well. Um, and for Denise to be able to put anything, uh, forward that she wants to as well.
Totally fine, just wanted to know for efficiency's sake, but that makes sense.
Yes, yeah.
I think in reality, in, in a perfect world, the answer would be yes.
Yes.
Um, but I think that now it's mid-December and we have the holidays. I just don't think that that would be feasible.
Okay.
Personally.
But this means that basically.
Yeah, yeah, it's everything but the cross t's and dot the i's.
Everything but, yeah, yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so first motion, please.
I move that the board intends to renew the town administrator's contract and will negotiate a successor agreement in executive session in good faith in early January.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. All right, seasonal population increase. Would you like to just quickly explain this to us?
Yes. So now that the board at our last meeting approved a seasonal license, and I will clarify that we've only approved one based on the ABC's now understanding of our situation. Um, but in order to have a seasonal license, the ABCC is required to have on file a seasonal population increase form. Um, so you will see the form has a zero because we do not have any seasonal increase in population.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is fine because for the section fifteen, whichever one we approved, um.
Set, the motion says section twelve.
Yes, so section fifteen was approved, um, so that one does not require a change in population. So the zero population just meets the requirement, they have it on file, and then we can continue with that section fifteen seasonal license. The section twelve will remain an annual license, but with a limited period of time.
Okay. Great, any other questions?
I'm confused.
I was too.
So the motion is about the section twelve seasonal liquor license.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were looking at the next motion, Engleborg. Yes, so section twelve is the on-premises pour license. That does not require a change in seasonal population, so the zero meets the requirement.
Okay, but the section fifteen, we're okay with?
No, so the section fifteen is the liquor store, package store license. That requires a change in population.
But this is section twelve in the motion.
Oh, I get it, so we're not changing the, they're going back to a yearly license for this?
We're going back to a yearly license, however, the ABCC has allowed us to restrict it to August to November. So it actually meets the concerns you had at the last meeting that we were approving a ten-month seasonal license. It is only a four-month license, but it's considered annual because they don't have an ability at the ABCC to have a package store seasonal license where we are not deemed a seasonal community.
So they're paying full price for?
No, so because it's still a four-month permit, we stuck with the, we struck with the seasonal proration because it's technically a season, but it's considered an annual license as far as the ABCC is concerned. So you'll see when you sign them later, it says in big letters across it, uh, this license is only good for, um, August first to November thirtieth.
Okay.
So it meets that criteria. Um, it's actually better than ten months and then, um, Shelburne is happy with it. I spoke with them. The ABCC is happy with it now. And then I think it meets the concerns that you guys had that we were approving a seasonal license, but they weren't gonna use it and we were prorating it, so. I think everyone is happy with this arrangement.
So this just affects the section twelve license that they have for in on-premise?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's why you're voting a zero, because it doesn't have any impact. They just need one on file.
They just need it on file. Jan.
Um, this is probably a technicality, um, but I remember it was one or two meetings ago, we were discussing the logis- not logistics, but the, you know, population densities, and we were looking at various things and, um, it was mentioned like for all the homes in Stow, like three of them have seasonal occupants or something like that. Is, are these apples and oranges or?
Yeah, so that, what they're referring to by seasonal community is beach communities, so the Cape where they have an actual increase. So people move down there for the summer. They have a significant increase and really the Berkshires.
Size, right, yeah.
So the wintertime, people go, the ski communities out west, um, so that's where they see a fluctuation. Seasonal license allows communities to get around the quota because they're saying, we have all these new people, we need to be able to satisfy their alcohol requirements. Um, and so that's why they're really geared to these, the two sections of the state. And the ABCC thought we were a Berkshire community when I spoke to them the first time, so he thought we were a ski community, so, um, there was some misunderstanding about where we were actually located.
Yeah, totally. Okay, cool, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I have that motion?
Yes, I move to approve the two thousand twenty six seasonal population increase as zero and to file the necessary form with the ABCC required by the section twelve seasonal liquor license.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we've got the, a whole bunch of license renewals. Um, so first, before we start reading them, does anyone have any questions about any of the licenses?
May I just briefly on the first two?
Oh, please.
So the class two and the common victualer licenses that are on your agenda this evening just did not have all the requirements in. By your last meeting, they now have satisfied all of our requirements.
Fantastic.
And then the liquor licenses, they all have satisfied their requirements. Uh, they have all had their necessary, um, fire and building inspections, so they're all up to speed and they are all paid up on their taxes.
Great, okay.
Fantastic.
Cause I noticed in our package, there was still that note.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Um, fantastic. Then any other questions on these before we start moving? Okay, so I will start taking motions.
One at a time.
We're gonna do one, two, and then this is all, this is a lot of reading.
Together. That's fine.
All the way through and further. It's a whole, it's a big, long motion.
Yep.
But, so that'll be the third one.
Just not the italicized text.
Just not the italicized text.
Yep, got it, okay.
Yep, all right, perfect.
I move to renew the town's class two license for the following business for two thousand twenty six Patterson Auto Body at eighteen Great Road.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous.
I move to renew the town's common victualer, uh, license for the following business for two thousand twenty six. Stow Cafe, one eighteen Great Road, twenty-nine Culinary LLC, Nans Market, two seventy-one Great Road.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to renew the town's two thousand twenty six liquor licenses for following businesses. Twenty-nine Culinary LLC, Nans Market at two seventy-one Great Road, Package Store, Wine and Malt. One seventeen Great Road LLC, Wine and Spirits of Stow, one seventeen Great Road Package Store, All Alcohol. AL and BC Incorporated, Eight Hudson Road, Package Store, All Alcohol. Fourth and Field, three oh two Boxborough Road, On Premises, All Alcohol. Honey Pot Hill Orchard LLC, one thirty-eight Sudbury Road, Bar and Winery, Pouring Permit. Red River Rock Incorporated, Red Ginger Restaurant, one seventeen Great Road, On Premises, All Alcohol. Robert Page Three LLC, Butternut Farm Golf Club, one fifteen Wheeler Road, On Premises, All Alcohol. Stow Food and Beverage LLC, Stow Acres Country Club, fifty-eight Randall Road, On Premises, All Alcohol. Wedgewood Country Club of Stow Incorporated, Wedgewood Pines Country Club, two fifteen Harvard Road, On Premises, All Alcohol. Further, I move to renew the two thousand twenty six lic- liquor license for Edward M. Painter, Shelburne Farm, one oh six West Acton Road, Package Store, Wine and Malt, restricted to August first through November thirtieth. And further, I move to approve and sign the two thousand twenty six renewal certification form as required by the ABCC.
Second.
Yes.
Number three, uh, AL and BC, do we need to mention that it's, uh, doing businesses Buschammy's Liquors? Mention the business name.
So I do not believe their license appears that way.
Ah, okay.
That's right from the license forms that they submit.
Great.
But let it be known.
Um, any further question? No? All right, um, seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. All right, and then next up, we have minutes. Does anyone have any questions?
I hope none.
None, great. Anybody else?
Uh-uh.
All right, let's take a motion.
I move to accept the meeting minutes of the November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five meeting.
Second, I mean second.
Um, any further questions? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have correspondence. Any questions about correspondence?
Comcast, what is going on?
I guess I do have a question about, uh, letter for consideration, the outreach to state legislature, legislatures. Did you have a, you must be aware of what's going on and do you have any comment about that?
I don't. I mean, I think it's, you know, certainly it's something we could discuss if you wanted to do outreach, um, the legislators, no.
Oh, okay.
I mean, this isn't anything that they're not aware of. Um, it's talked about heavily at the state level. Uh, we talked about it with the MMA report. Um, it's just, I think, some communities are trying to get some momentum to, you know, insolidarily send concerns, but the legislature is well aware of this.
And MMA is also supportive of this request?
Yes, and MMA has launched their own advocacy anyways, so they are advocating on behalf of the three hundred and fifty-one municipalities. So if, if you wanted to add it to your agenda and, and sort of join forces and send a letter, you certainly could, but.
Um, I had a quick question about the Bruin Road property. Um, I believe that the bound, our bound for the perambulation is on there and that's why we're getting this letter. Um, cause I, I know the last time we perambulated that we had to go to this thing and there was a guy with a gun and whatever. It was like, because it, at, at that point, um, they did have, uh, it was a band guard station.
Yeah.
Um, so is this just something we just need to be aware of?
It is. I don't think we wanna take any action or we have any interest in any property at that location.
Okay, just as long as we are able to access the bound.
Yes.
To be able to market it. Okay, all right, um.
I have a question about Zero Samuel Prescott Drive.
So it's behind Shaw's? I was just asking, um, it's, it is a, a Wyatt Zero or?
Well, I was wondering, is it this, what is now the Donoma Gym?
No.
No.
No, 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 it's.
There, there's a parcel of land for sale back there.
Yeah. Yes, it's, it's right behind the plaza.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah. So it'll be a, a small mixed use.
There's a person sign. You will never see it.
Well, I watched it, I walked down there.
Yeah.
It's down that dirt road.
Yeah.
All right, um, then I will take a final motion here.
Aye.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned. Thank you all. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
You all have a lot to sign.